Good evening and welcome to the May 1st of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Bill Twist tonight, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
If you'd bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you that we have a great city that we can live in. We just ask that you would come this evening and guide us in the direction that we need to go. We ask that you be with the election tomorrow, and we ask that in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Schwizer?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
All members of council are present. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the April 17th meeting of Troy City Council. Minutes of Council, April 17, 2017. Committee reports. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing city to participate in ODOT purchase of road salt. Law and Ordinance Committee recommended that Resolution Number R 2427 be approved, an application for agricultural district by Evelyn Schaefer, General Partner. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing agreement related to the 2017 Troy Strawberry Festival. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the 2017 paving program. Resolution R 21, 2017, complete streets policy was given fourth reading and adopted. Resolution Number R 24, 2017, agricultural district application, second reading and adopted. Resolution R 26, 2017, advertised forbids for the 2017 paving program, first reading and adopted. Resolution R 27, 2017, participation in ODOT winter salt contract was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O 9, 2017, prohibiting retail dispensaries of medical marijuana, fourth reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O 11, 2017, Troy Strawberry Festival Agreement, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:21 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
We accept the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. We have a very unusual agenda this evening with no committee reports and no legislation on the agenda. However, our Law and Ordinance Committee does have one notice to read. Mr. Schwizer is Chairman of that committee.
Yes, ma'am. I'll try to draw this out a little bit. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of a transfer of the existing D-5 and D-6 liquor permits from Mito and Company DBA Sakai Japanese Restaurant, 2303 West Main Street, to Chen Sushi LLC with the same restaurant name and address. The Police Department has advised that there is no basis for objection to the application.
Thank you. That concludes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements? No, there are not. Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments this evening?
Well, I too will be very brief. Obviously, Election Day is tomorrow, and it's best wishes to all that are willing to give their time and their talent and many times treasure to make this city great. So, best wishes to all. Wanted to let everybody know, if you haven't noticed, the bikes are in town. We were very fortunate to have a delegation from Mexico to come and be a part of the gala and ribbon cutting and farewell, and they are back home. But they are hoping to come back later in the summer and see how things are going. But they were very appreciative of the reception, the warm reception that all of you and everyone in the city has given to them. Also, everybody's wondering about the newly renovated Hobart Arena. They will be having a public open house, and that will be held in May, May 22nd. It'll be kind of a walk-through, six to eight, come and go, kind of an open house. But I wanted to make sure everybody is aware and put that on their calendar and hope to maybe stop by. Also, this Saturday, big day. If you want to see a fun event, the Troy Strawberry Festival is a Golden Couple event at the Hayner. It's at 10 o'clock. It's free. It's a hoot worth the price of admission, which is free. And then in the afternoon, what a wonderful display of Superbike Saturday. At 12:30, we'll have a dedication of Duke Park, a new mountain bike course. They're going to have some relay racing there, and it'll be a fun time. And then at 1:00, we're going to cross town to Miami Shores where we have a bike gazebo that is going to be dedicated at that point. And then we're coming back to Treasure Island so that we have a youth activity safety awareness program and helmet giveaway, I believe, on that particular day. So, it is a wonderful weekend to be a part of Troy's activities. So, I just wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, do you have any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to remind everyone that we did start the new automated trash pickup program. Everyone should have received a 65-gallon toter or cart. If you haven't, then give us a call over at the Street Department. Please put those out, much the same as you put out the recycling toters, and we will come pick them up. This is our first week, so things may be a little slower. Bear with us. We have noticed, or we've been receiving some phone calls of scattering of places that did not receive a cart, so we are getting those delivered to them this week. One note of confusion that we will continue to inform people is that if you put your old trash container out, we will take it thinking that you no longer want it because you have the new toter. If you do want to get rid of it, if your intent is to put it out there, we will take it as part of our special trash pickup, which, as you all know, happens the same day as regular trash pickup. I know where you're going. You want to know what the number is. The number at the Street Department is 335-1914. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kerber, do you have any comments this evening?
I do not, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Friggy, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to commend Jeremy Drake and the Park Department. After 102 years of the same backstops at Haywood School, it may not have been 102 years, but they were old. They were replaced this spring, and nine days after they were replaced, one got completely destroyed by a tree that fell on it. And it happened on a Friday night, and by Monday at 10 o'clock, his crew had it completely cleaned up and ready for baseball that day. So, a big shout-out to Jeremy Drake and his crew.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, I've got a request. Could you please begin asking for, and including into our council packets, the minutes and the treasuries reports of the board meetings from the organizations that are supported by our tax dollars, by the city and taxpayer money, including the Troy Rec, Lincoln Community Center, Troy Development Council, Troy Main Street, and any others that receive an annual funding from the city? Yes. I would appreciate that if we could do that. Are there any comments from City Council members? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to encourage and I want to thank all of the folks that we've spoken to on behalf of Operation Recreation and the Parks Projects with the municipal income tax increase. It has been well-received with every group that we have spoken to and asked to come and speak to. The comments at the open houses that we've had over the last year and a half or so have always been positive and well-received. But I would like to thank all of those that have invited us out to speak to them and encourage everyone to get out and vote tomorrow and support the Parks Projects and the limited 10-year increase. So, it's going to be huge for the city. Thank you.
Mrs. Oda?
I have a question. We're getting a lot of, I'm getting a lot of comments, people wondering if they have more trash than their bin will hold, what are they supposed to do? And with graduation parties coming up, that is going to be an issue.
It may be in certain cases. What we are noticing is that, and this is only the first day of the first week, and we want to give it a week or two to see how it unfolds, if you will. Probably, according to Jerry, about 10% of the stops have shown overflow of garbage. Now, what we have, as we've talked to folks, though, there have been numerous requests for us to deliver them recycling carts. They're not recycling, but they want to start, so we're sending the carts out. That's the kind of activity, the kind of encouragement we want to do right now. Like I said earlier, this is a slow process. We're just starting it. We know there's going to be some transition. In the meantime, you know, we have refused to take some trash today, but it was because of the content, not because of the overflow. So, we're just trying to educate, and then we will see in a couple of weeks or so where we're at, and if there are folks that there are real problems, then we will have to regroup the mayor and I and staff to discuss any options.
How could people not have had recycling carts?
They just refused to take them, or they gave them back to us, or they, I don't know.
Well, graduation's in a couple of weeks, so if it's overflow, they just put it out? I mean, it's going to be an issue.
We'll talk to staff. It may be an issue, it may not. I mean, you know, it depends on how much regular trash they generate, and if there's, you know, if they've got room in the bin anyway, you know, we'll just have to take it on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Twilliger?
Madam President, in regards to our bike-friendly communities, we started a program. I met with Main Street Troy this morning, and I will meet Wednesday evening. We're getting ready to kick off what is called a Bike Friendly Business. Businesses will be designated. They'll have a sticker, involvement and a new map put out, which would indicate to bikers which businesses are of interest to help promote economic use of the bike trail and the associated areas. We're also starting this week our third year of the Clean Trails Program. That is a program where we have seven volunteer groups, the newest one of which is Cub Scout Pack Five. They've taken one, the oldest of which is headed by the senior, Mr. Friggy, and the interact of 24 years of diligent behavior. He actually bailed this year, but he'll be back. But that is a volunteer group. We go from trestle to the new ball fields. That's the area that we try to clean. And lastly, the dedication of the gazebo at Miami Shores. We would appreciate people there. It was a very gracious donation, no cost to the city, for that gazebo structure by the Weaver family.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Snee?
Yes, I just want to mention one thing. I had a call this week from a resident who had concerns about her water being shut off when she wasn't expecting that, and it turned out that our department that monitors water usage, the fiscal department, had monitored an extremely high use of water. And so, just as a reminder to residents that if that happens, their water may be shut off to prevent them having an extremely high bill if something needs to be repaired. However, she was out of town and wasn't able to be contacted, so a reminder also to make sure that your contact information is up to date on any of your utility accounts. But I certainly appreciated the show while she was getting back to me as soon as she did to explain that and to the resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Anyone on city staff have any comments this evening? Anyone in the audience? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
No pressure. My name is Ralph Brown, and I live in Tip City. I'm sorry. Well, I'm not sorry, but Mr. Kerber, my ex-wife's attorney. I have a problem with the police department and the situation and how it was handled. I've tried to contact the chief, who hasn't returned my phone call or my actual message in weeks. I also stopped at the mayor's office and didn't receive a return from that either. Don't really know what to do. I'm the guy. But had an incident on the highway, and end up I got rear-ended. Gentleman cut me off. I flipped him off. That's the extent of what I did. He proceeded to try to run me off the road and then actually ran into the back of my car. Police officer. As we got out of the car, he said things, I said things, I said things loud, and I cussed. Sergeant showed up. Basically, it was discussed that it was just a mutual road rage and to let it go. I suggested that the sergeant speak to my son, my 18-year-old son that was in the car, and he pulled him off to the side, spoke to him, came back and said, "Assured clear distance," and left it at that. Gentleman struck my car, drove away. I went to get the copy of the police report, which, when I left the scene, I had just an officer's card with no additional information, no contact information, no insurance information, no nothing. I asked to speak to the person above whoever, and captain came out. I tried to explain to him what had happened, and he kept interrupting me, acting like he was trying to catch me up in something. Again, I admit freely, I cussed. I did not cuss at the officer, but I did swear profusely at the individual that was talking back at me. I'm totally unhappy, and I want to know why. And I was told by the captain that I can, someone can strike someone, and they have 24 hours to report the incident. I'm a vivid watcher of cops, and I love that stuff. And every time I've ever seen that happen, it's called hit and run. I can't believe that if any of you sitting here were struck by an individual and they drove off, someone would look at you and say they have 24 hours to report the incident. I flipped a guy off. I, that's what I did. I did not pursue, I did not invoke, I did not, I did not drive, you know, in any way, shape, or form, offensively at this individual. I pulled over after getting off the highway and seeing that he was following me. I pulled over. He pulled over and got out of his car, cussing and yelling, and I drove away. I didn't put my window down. My window doesn't work. He got back in his car quickly, rear-ended me, and drove away. I called and talked to the dispatcher and followed him through town at normal speeds until an officer pulled up behind us, and it went from there. He told the officer that I hit him, which, if I hit him, I would think he would be calling the police and following me. But that's not how it happened. After speaking to my son, which I had to encourage the sergeant to do, again, the guy sided with a sure clear distance. I am dumbfounded. I also, my son was, when I came back, because I didn't know, I took $4 to get a copy of the police report. I only had plastic. My son came with me, and I read the police report, which is not accurate at all to the situation, is how it happened. Once the individual sergeant spoke to my son, the person involved didn't even fill out a statement. He just accepted that he had been had, and that was it. I asked, after reading it, to speak to the captain again, and he came out with a bit of an attitude, and I said, "This isn't accurate." He starts yelling at me. Do I want to fill out a police report? I said, "I already filled out a police report. It's not accurate." And it kind of went from there. Well, while this was happening, my son actually was smart enough to hit video on his phone, so if there's any question about that, I'd gladly share it with you. But I don't know what to do, don't know where to go, don't know that there's anything to be done, but totally disappointed that I couldn't even get a phone call. While I was standing in the mayor's office, talking to the young lady at the counter or at her desk, mayor walked past me twice, and I was told he wasn't there. So, just saying. Well, is this, I mean, where do I go from here? Who talks to me about the situation that happened?
I'm going to defer this to Mr. Kerber, please.
Well, Mr. Brown, there's probably a number of, you know, the situation you described is, I guess, best way to characterize it, pretty fact-specific as far as, I'm sure the other driver had his own story, or I'm assuming it was a he, I don't know, but...
It was a he, but as I said, my son was there. He's 18. He was a witness to what happened, and we did not, once the officer pulled us over, I got out of the car and stood at the trunk. He stayed in the car, so that there was no misconceptions, that we had a story straight.
With that said, it appears that the Troy Police Department cited the other driver when you mentioned the assured clear distance.
He was cited, yes. $600 of the damage to my car.
Okay. So, you certainly have, on one respect, I think that you potentially could have, and I can't give you any advice about that, but you may have a claim against the other driver.
I do. His insurance company has already paid me.
Okay. Well, and that's one thing. And as far as, you know, I'm not sure, you know, what your specific complaint, if you felt that the police department should have charged him more, or if they, I guess, I'm a little...
My question is the definition of what is assault? If I ram your car, and I'm asking you very specific, if I'm unhappy with you, we've had words, which, I didn't even have words with the gentleman. I flipped him off, and I only have one good one. So, if I do that, and you proceed to, or I ram you with my car, I try to run you off the road, and then I physically hit you with my car and leave, does that not define assault and define hit and run to the T?
Well, you know, I don't want to...
You're there. I understand. If you're involved, with your experience, would you be happy with the situation?
Mr. Brown, all I could, I don't want to assume facts or hypotheticals. I certainly wasn't there, all right? You know, I know the police officers are tasked with a job of making a determination, and before they file charges, it's not something that's done lightly, that they have to determine that there's probable cause. And sometimes that can be a difficult determination.
After speaking to my son and citing him, I'm assuming that he came up with probable cause.
For the assured clear distance.
For him to be cited.
Correct.
Being that the accident happened on the ramp coming off of 75, and he was pulled over almost just down the road from here, doesn't that constitute hit and run? And where, in God's name, if I run into one of your police cruisers, do I have 24 hours to go home and decide whether I'm going to report it, or am I going to get chased by 10 cars, pulled over at gunpoint, and said, "What happened?"
Well, Mr. Brown, I don't want to make any conclusions based on facts that I'm not aware of. All right? That's, I want to make that abundantly clear.
And that's fine.
And we can play hypotheticals, and I can answer hypotheticals, but that's not going to serve your questions.
I understand, but I've tried to go through the proper chain of command. I started with your captain, who had attitude with me about it.
Well, I'm sure, given your appearance here, that we can reach out to the police department and see what the status of that is. This is the first I've heard of it, so...
And I feel bad. Again, you're my ex-wife's attorney, so I'm kind of giving you...
Well, I mean, that has no bearing on my answer.
I know, but I'm trying to, I'm trying not to be, I'm very angry over this situation.
Well, we can check the status of...
And being that I went to a captain, went to the chief, who was behind the glass when I was standing there saying I wished to speak to the chief, and was told, "Well, the chief makes his own appointments." So, I gave my name and phone number, which, it's been at least three weeks. This happened on Valentine's Day. So, I've given more than ample time for someone to communicate back with me. I also, that very day, went to the mayor's office, and again, I, "Mr. Mayor, you walked past me twice while I stood there talking to this young lady about the entire situation." I'm fairly confident I don't know, but I assume you got the message. I heard someone say, "That guy." So, I'm him. I'm real unhappy about the way I was treated. I moved to Tip City when I got divorced. My ex moved to Troy. I, between my three children, my 21-year-old son started in kindergarten at Haywood, so I've made this trip back and forth from Tip to Troy hundreds of times. Sometimes, they're all in bands, sometimes three and four times a day, back and forth on this route, and you've never heard my name or seen my face. Now, here I stand, telling you a situation that happened, and I've gone through the proper channels. I got no response, and now I'm standing in front of City Council because I'm not happy with how I was treated. I did not cuss at the officer. I actually tried to apologize to the sergeant for yelling, which I admit freely I did. I yelled because the individual that was involved was standing right beside me, and he was mouthing also. As he drove away, he actually threatened my son with the police officer sitting in the cruiser with the window down, and I asked if he heard it. He, of course, didn't hear it. But the individual drove right up to beside us and threatened my son and said it was a good thing the officer was standing there, or sitting there. I've done all the right things. I reported a problem to the police department and feel like somehow, I mean, I had to stand at the situation and say, "Gentlemen, I'm the victim in this, and you're treating me, this is dismissed. This is mutual road rage." I flipped a guy off. He attacked me from that point. That's all I did. It's not right.
I can't, we can't undo what's happened to this point. And, Mr. Kerber, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point, it seems to be a civil matter which would need to be handled through the courts and through an attorney that you choose, or that you select.
So, it's not possible for a police chief to actually contact me about the situation and talk about it?
Mr. Titterington?
Madam Chair, as you're aware, we do follow Kalia. We are a certified department. We have a process in place for investigating any complaints against... We have a process in place for investigating any complaints against officers. I apologize if no one got back to you. You know, I have your side of the story. I don't have the chief's, so whether he tried to contact you or not, I can't verify that. Contact obviously wasn't made. So, what I'd suggest is.
Mr. Mayor, did you speak to the chief?
I didn't know. I don't recall you.
Okay.
I am a pretty busy guy.
And I understand that.
And thank you very much.
You interrupted the girl that I was talking to twice as you walked past.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
But.
And I would have, as I've done many times, refer it to the proper channels, who, it's their responsibility, and they're paid to do that job.
That's what I would think.
Sounds like you've talked to captain, so you did get some.
I did, and I encourage anyone who wants to watch it to watch my son's phone, because I actually asked him, because I was told when I swore at the individual at the scene, I was threatened with disorderly. He wasn't threatened with anything.
But you were listened to. You were, there was a follow-through with captain.
Well, no, what the captain told me was that you had 24 hours to report it, which.
It would have been referred to the police department.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Titterington?
Before I was interrupted.
Sorry.
If Mr. Brown would like to give us, give Mrs. Snyder your phone number again.
Love to.
We will follow up tomorrow. I will ask on behalf of the mayor that he make contact with Mr. Brown and investigate it.
He, meaning the chief?
The chief, yes.
Okay. Okay. If you would then, either now or at the end of the meeting, give Mrs. Snyder your contact information.
Sure.
And we'll follow up.
I would gladly do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone in the audience? I believe we have some members of Leadership Troy here this evening. If you want to start at the back, back there, and stand up, give us your name, and if you know who you will be representing on city council or staff during your day here at city hall, that would be nice to know, so, if you don't mind doing that.
I'm Katie Wall. I will be Mrs. Sne.
I'm Katie Yellen. I'll be Ms. Evans.
I'm Terry Lindis. And I'll be Jeremy Drake.
I'm Susan Butterberg. And I'll be Chief Phillips.
I'm Rody Showalter. And I'll be Tom Butterberg. And I'm Megan Haste.
I'm Adrian Myers. I will be Mr. Kerber.
I'm Aaron Scott. And I'll be Mr. Trumbull.
Okay. Do you have any questions this evening? Any of you? Okay, we appreciate you being here. And if you want to contact, or it would be helpful for you to contact your corresponding person that you're going to be representing, you may do so between now and the time that you have your day here with us. Is there any other comments this evening? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week.